Welcome to our last local election debate hosted by Leighton Broadcasting right here on News Talk KBRF 1250. These debates have also been recorded by PEG Access and are posted on the PEG Access website and their YouTube channel. My name is Sarah Duffy and I will be your moderator today. Today we will meet our Fergus Falls School District candidates that will have an upcoming election on November 8th. The election will result in three members being appointed to the school board for a term expiring January 1 of 2027. The school board consists of total of six members. Residents living within the Fergus Falls School District will be able to vote for up to three candidates. School Board candidates include incumbents Melanie Cole, Kirby Anderson, and Melissa Hermes, along with our other candidates Arden Cheno and Timothy Nansen. I will note that Timothy Nansen was not able to be with us unfortunately today, but he has provided a prerecorded opening statement which we will hear momentarily. The school board consists of the incumbent members that I just mentioned, in addition to Steve Vigasa, Matt Lemke, and Natalie Knutson. At the outset, I would request that our candidates and everyone in the audience be respectful to one another. To ensure a fair and objective debate, questions have all been sent to the candidates ahead of today's debate. I will not be taking any questions from the audience today. We will open each debate by providing the candidates with two minutes to provide an opening statement. We will then go into our questions. We have a total of five questions today for the candidates, and each candidate will be provided two minutes to answer each question. I will start with Mr. Anderson, the candidate to my right, and with each subsequent question, beginning with the candidate next in order. If a candidate would like to provide a rebuttal answer, you can indicate this to me by raising your hand. I will allow you up to 30 seconds for rebuttal. After our questions are concluded, I will provide each candidate with two minutes for a closing statement. We will have a two-flag system today that will indicate the time remaining on each question. We will hold up a yellow flag to indicate 60 seconds remaining, and a red flag indicates fewer than 10 seconds remaining. All time limits will be enforced today, so please adhere to these guidelines. Lastly, to be heard by the audience beyond the debate room, know that your microphones will only amplify sounds directly in front of them. So please ensure that the microphone is facing you and that you are speaking loudly and within a reasonable distance from the microphone. So now that we have laid the foundation and procedure for today's debate, I will begin with our school board candidate opening statements. As I previously mentioned, we have a prerecorded statement from Timothy Nansen which will be played now.
Good afternoon. My name is Tim Nansen and it is my privilege to be a candidate for the 544 School Board. Thank you to KBRF and Sarah Duffy for moderating this event, to those of you who are in attendance, and to the incumbent candidates that are willing to be reelected. Thank you for your work you've done for our children. I look forward to partnering with you towards our common goals. I'm sorry for not being able to be with you today as I am attending my grandfather's funeral out of state. I appreciate this opportunity to address you, although I'd rather be with you in person. My main concern and reason for running is to remove politics from our schools and to challenge decisions being made based on political agendas and group think. Politics and social agendas have no place in our schools. Decisions need to be made solely on what is best for our kids' education to make them competitive in tomorrow's world. We need to focus on providing our children with the best tools to allow them to function in today's ever-changing and challenging world. Our children need to be taught math, reading, writing, history, critical thinking skills, and how to become responsible adults, but this must be done in conjunction with the parents. Parenting responsibility should not be a role of our schoolteachers or administration. Parents should be included, supported, encouraged to be a voice for their students. My focus would be on programs focused on raising our children's education knowledge level and test scores to make our district an example for all Minnesota schools, not only by how students feel and their level of emotional stability, but by how they excel and surpass standards in practical applications. While focusing on students, I look forward to collaborating with fellow board members, city leaders, and the community to ensure we provide and maintain quality facilities, resources, and a safe community where our kids have the opportunity to thrive and start the journey to becoming the best versions of themselves. If you have questions for me, please reach out via email, nansen@schoolboard@gmail.com. I look forward to working for our children to improve their standard of education and learning in the classroom. Thank you for your support.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Nansen. We will now start with our in-person opening statements with our first candidate here, incumbent Kirby Anderson.
Good afternoon. My name is Kirby Anderson. I have served on the Fergus Falls School Board as treasurer for the last four years. I am a lifelong resident of the Fergus Falls area, and I am a maroon gold otter through and through. I also come from a true otter family. My dad Dennis was a 1952 grad. My mom Bev was an Elbe Lake eagle, but we try not to hold that against her. My two brothers and my sister are all otter grads. My son and daughter were K through 12 otters, and my daughter currently teaches high school language arts here. My wife Leme and her parents Kelly and Marcia Ferber, and her two sisters, all graduated here. We also have an otter graduate as a granddaughter, and four more grandchildren that are currently enrolled here in kindergarten, 4th grade, 8th grade, and 11th grade. I attended Fergus Falls Public Schools for 12 years. I graduated in 1974. My education also includes degrees from the Community College and Morehead State University where I have a BA and a Masters, both in business. I did work for Otter Tail Power for 36 years in information technology, market planning, strategic planning, wind development, and customer service. I retired in 2013, and I live with my wife just north of Fergus Falls. My reasons for running for reelection to the school board are simple. I want to continue to invest my time and talent to help make our school district the best organization that it can be. Education is a business, but it's also a partnership. The school board must work collaboratively with administration, students, teachers, support staff, parents, taxpayers, and community members to give our graduates the best education that we can afford, to prepare them for their future after graduation. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next opening statement will be from incumbent candidate Melanie Cole. Melanie?
Hello. I'm here in front of you today because I'm invested in our community. I believe each one of us makes a difference, and I'm determined to be a positive contributor, adding what I can. I went to the Blanden Leadership Training Program many years ago, and I recognize the wisdom of each of us bringing our strengths and relying on the whole to establish a strong community. My dedication shows in the careers that I have chosen. For the past 31 years, I've lived in Fergus Falls and I have dedicated my careers to human service fields, offering support, services, and accountability where needed. Currently, I investigate child abuse for Otter Tail County. Many times, people in the community believe that I work at the school, and that is my role with the school, but that's not the role of a school board member. As an offshoot of my current job, I'm working with school districts and the county attorney's office to address truancy in our schools by developing a process, working steps, and working with the individual families. That the fact that children are the center of my focus absolutely fits with my career choices and my role on the school board, and we are making progress. I've served on the school board for 20 years, and the experience matters. There are many facets to the role, including knowing the limitations of your power, facilities projects, contract negotiations, the hodgepodge of financing set by the state, and the mandates set by the federal government, along with many other facets. By re-electing me to the school board, you retain the vessel of knowledge and experience, and those contributions will be a benefit to our kids and our community.
Thank you. So just as a reminder, the yellow flag will be 60 seconds, and the red flag means that you have 10 seconds left. So you can finish your question when the red flag... I won't be too harsh today.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Melanie. Our next opening statement will be from candidate Arden Cheno.
Hi, I'm Arden Cheno, and I'm running for school board. I have a wife and two kids. My son is in 6th grade, my daughter is in 10th. I graduated in 1990, and then I went to Alec Tech and got a degree in carpentry, and then I've lived here ever since. I'm running because I would like to see more get put into the vo-tech part of the school. I don't think there's enough going into the vo-tech part, and that's where all the jobs are lately. And then we also have to be thinking about the schools and getting more room for the students because Kennedy is getting too crowded, and we have to think about where we're going to go with the kids. And that's eventually going to involve possibly building a new school, and I think that with some carpentry background, I would be helpful with designing and creating space for the kids, and that's why I am running for the school board.
Thank you. Our last opening statement will be from incumbent candidate Missy Hermes.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak to the voters and stakeholders of the Fergus Falls School District. I appreciate the last four years that I've served on the school board, and I hope that I can be reelected and serve another four years. My interest in and love for public education has developed over a long career in this field. I've had the privilege to teach in classrooms in Chad, Central Africa, with the United States Peace Corps, where I taught English and worked in libraries. I've been a substitute teacher in local schools, districts, and a school secretary at Our Lady of Victory School. It has been a learning experience that I treasure to serve on school district committees such as the ECFE Parent Advisory Council, the Special Education Parent Advisory Council, the World's Best Workforce Committee, and the District Curriculum Review Advisory Committee. As a local museum educator, I'm blessed with the opportunity to visit classrooms throughout Otter Tail County, in addition to offering learning experiences for ages pre-K through our community elders. The key to my philosophy is the saying, "We're all in this together." From the school board to the administrative team, to certified and non-certified staff, taxpayers, parents, and students, we succeed when we all work together to provide a high-quality, equitable education for all of our youth, and educational opportunities for all lifelong learners, and that's why I'm running for the school board.
Thank you. We will now go into our question portion of the debate today. We will come back to Mr. Anderson for our first question. Again, you'll have two minutes to answer each question. If you want to provide a rebuttal answer, just raise your hand to me, and I'll give you 30 seconds for rebuttal. Mr. Anderson, one of the major news stories involving the school district as of late was an incident with the boys' soccer team. Do you think there's a hazing or bullying problem in the school district, and how do you think the district should handle complaints of bullying?
First of all, I disagree with the premise of the question. I don't think that any recent incident with the boys' soccer team was a, quote, "major news story." The front-page article was based on rumors, anonymous and unverified sources, in hearsay, and was inaccurate and rushed into print, and for what reason? Just because things are discussed on social media does not make them true. The claims that there may not be a homecoming game, or that the JV would substitute for the varsity football parents' night, or that students had to sign confidential agreements were all patently false. The school administration did a thorough job of investigating any and all aspects of the issue, and it took time to do so, and sometimes that timeline may not match up very well with the newspaper reporters' deadlines. The paper would have much more credibility had they waited until all the facts were in prior to printing. Second, I do not think we have a bullying or hazing problem in our schools. I do know that kids may do dumb things from time to time. I know that I did a few stupid things as a teenager that maybe weren't appropriate. And finally, how should we handle complaints that may come in regarding bullying? We have very detailed policies, both on bullying and hazing. Policy 514 addresses bullying. It begins with an act of bullying by either an individual student or a group of students, is expressly prohibited on school premises, on school district property, or school functions or activities, or on school transportation. And Policy 526 addresses hazing. That policy begins with, "No student, teacher, administrator, volunteer, contractor, or other employee of the school district shall plan, direct, encourage, aid, or engage in hazing." To me, that sounds like we have a zero-tolerance policy on both bullying and hazing. And the rest of these two policies detail all the definitions, the reporting procedures, the actions, anything, any prohibition of retaliation reprisal, and so on. And there's a lot of state of Minnesota statutes that are relevant to that, and these policies are available on the district's website. Just go to fergusotters.org and click on the info link, "District Policies," and you'll find them in the 500 section. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cole?
Like Kirby Anderson before me, I take issue with the characterization of the incident with the boys' soccer team being a major news article. But if I have an opportunity at the end of what I really want to say, then I'll elaborate on that further. But I want to address the spirit of the question. Do we have an issue with bullying at the school? In my opinion, even the most minute of insults lobbed at another student is a problem. It's something we don't want to tolerate, and it's something that we want to work with students to address. Every school has an issue with bullying to a more or lesser degree. It's constantly been an issue for all school districts everywhere, and what is at issue is a developing sense of social skills and developing brains. And each year, we have a fresh rotation of minds of students coming in that need direction. How many of us can look back and not regret an instance where we unintentionally made a rude or crude remark? Hazing's a separate category involving what I believe is physical assault as well, and I don't believe we have a significant issue with that. But with that just said, I don't think bullying will ever be completely eliminated from school, and it practically makes me snort when I look at how we treat each other in society today with social media and what I saw were standards of behavior that no longer exist. So if we are going to address a bullying problem, let's begin by taking a look at how we're treating other people in our lives. We have hired a hall monitor at the school, and we have done other things to address the bullying, but I talked too long at the beginning and I ran out of time. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Melanie. Mr. Cheno?
I don't believe that there is a hazing or bullying issue. I mean, you're going to have some minor issues with bullying, with name-calling and stuff, but that's issues that you can deal with. You're going to have to basically just have kids learn to be more social and get along with others in order to deal with the bullying. That's the only way to deal with it. I mean, if there gets to be a real issue with bullying, yeah, the school has policies. I mean, there's zero tolerance for that. It should not be tolerated. And hazing, I don't think there's an issue.
Thank you. Ms. Hermes?
Like everyone before me, I would not characterize the incident that's referred to as a major news story. But let me say that the school board and the administrators of ISD 544 do not tolerate hazing. We have in place policies that lay out the procedures to follow should a supposed incident of hazing take place, and to the best of my knowledge, our administrators and principals follow what is set forth in the policy in the incident you're referring to in this question. Our policies are all available, as Kirby already said, for anyone to read online on the school district website, and we have bullying policies in place, too. And unfortunately, yes, we have students who have experienced bullying, and I don't want to minimize that issue by saying everyone, every school has that, because this is an issue that our school district takes seriously. And recently, for example, a parent recommended to me an online bullying reporting software called BRIM, and so it's currently being examined, but we're doing all that we can to not have that taking place.
Thank you. I would just like to, I guess, more as a public service announcement, I have a little bit of knowledge about this, and a few years ago, for our listeners, the legislature passed a law that requires school districts to adopt a bullying policy, and there is an incident report, I believe a complaint report, listed on the school district's website. I think Mr. Anderson mentioned that, to make reports of bullying. I think the biggest issue is not reporting the bullying, so the school district doesn't have an opportunity to do that. Once there's a report of bullying, state law requires that the school district conduct an investigation into that bullying, and so it is a pervasive issue all across the state of Minnesota, which is why the legislature took the action that it did to pass the Safe and Supportive Schools Act a few years ago. So that's just more of a public service announcement and follow-up to the first question. So we will go to Ms. Cole for our second question here. With open enrollment, you see quite a few school buses from area communities picking up students in Fergus Falls to bring them to other school districts. What can the Fergus Falls School District do to keep local students in Fergus Falls schools?
Open enrollment revolves around parent choice, and I believe in parent choice. Obviously, our legislature did as well because they implemented the open enrollment law so that parents can choose whichever school district they want. Last time, we did a tally on that. Per capita, Fergus is claiming more students from other districts than they are from us. So whereas we lose a larger number, it's because we have a larger population. But I believe that parents should have an option to take a look. What I would look at, at which school district they want for their students, because if a parent wants a class of, graduating class of 20 students, Fergus is never going to offer that, and so that's a consideration. If I was looking as a parent to consider which school district I'd send my child to, I'd take some things into account, like what's the curriculum look like? Are there a lot of choices in the offerings? Are there vocational offerings? What do the students get to choose from during their workday? I'd take a look at the MCA scores. Superintendent Drake just posted these, and other than Battle Lake, we are outshining the neighboring schools by a wide margin on the statewide test scores. I'd look at travel time. How much time do you want your child on a school bus? Special education services vary between districts. Support service ratio. I'd take a look at the culture of the school where my child is going to go. Fergus Otters have won more sportsmanship awards than any other school district in the Central Lakes Conference, and that's something I'm proud of because of what it says about the character of our students. I'd take a look at alternative learning options. What's available within the school district for my child? And Fergus offers several different formats. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cheno?
From what I've found from a few people that I know that have their students going to other school districts, it's because they're looking for class sizes that are smaller so that the students have more one-on-one with the teachers, because they feel the class sizes are too big. And some of them feel that there's too much focus on sports in Fergus Falls, but that's their personal preference. Some people don't agree, some people don't disagree. It's just the parent's choice of where they want to go. There's nothing much you can really do about that. It's just what the parent feels is the best for their child, and to get their child the best education.
Thank you. Ms. Hermes?
Parents in Minnesota and Otter Tail County want to choose what they feel is best for their child, and that's why we have open enrollment in this state, and I support that. Our school district offers a number of exciting and innovative options for families, including our IQ Academy online option. Hundreds of students from around the state attend classes through IQ Academy right here in Fergus Falls. However, you just can't see a school bus bringing them into our community. Our STEM curriculum, the Prairie Science School, Otter Preschool, School of Choice, the Certified Nursing Assistant Program in conjunction with the Community College, our fantastic automotive and drone technology programs, these are just a few of the programs we offer to keep students right here in Fergus Falls. And making sure that families know about that, what is available is important.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson?
Minnesota, of course, is an open enrollment state. That means that parents here have the choice to have their child attend any public school in the state regardless of where they reside. This creates a somewhat competitive situation for public schools. Parents can not only choose to send their child to another district, but they can also choose a private school, an online school, or a homeschooling option. Fergus Falls is a relatively large community surrounded by smaller towns, and that's why you see buses coming into town every day. We also send some of our buses to pick up out-of-district students. The reasons that parents make their school choices are varied and often depend on personal circumstances and choices. Most of our in-district net losses go to Underwood and Ratse, Hillcrest and Ashby. Most of our in-district net gains come from Pelican Rapids, Battle Lake, Breckenridge, and West Central, so it kind of evens out. But we also draw hundreds of students from across the state that attend our online school known as Stride, which is also known as the IQ Academy. So what are we doing to keep our students local, our local students here? We work hard to make students and parents feel welcome so that they want to be here. It involves hiring qualified teachers and support staff, having good facilities, and letting parents know that a larger school often has benefits and offerings that smaller schools don't have. We have a brand-new preschool at Lincoln. Our high school course selections contain many more electives than what smaller schools have, and our vocational education program is the envy of many other districts. We offer many college prep courses that are complemented by the post-secondary options with our partnership at the local community college. Our athletic department offers many extracurricular options for students, and we have a hockey program that the smaller schools don't have, and that attracts many students from out of town. Our music and drama departments are outstanding. The Area Learning Center is a huge asset to our district, as is our special ed program. And as Melanie pointed out, our MCA test scores that we take annually show that our students consistently outperform state averages, and also outperform nearly all of the surrounding schools in our area. So all of these things are good attributes for marketing, and we have a lot to offer, and we'll continue to improve to provide quality education.
Thank you. Well, we are about halfway through our debate today. We'll be back with more of the Fergus Falls School Debate here on News Talk 1250 KBRF after a word from our sponsors. Welcome back to the Fergus Falls School Board's debate. We will jump right in here with our third question with Mr. Cheno. The school board recently passed switching the high school's school day from seven classes to five classes a day, and switching from having two semesters to having three trimesters in the school year. This change will go into effect next year. What are your thoughts on this new five-by-three schedule?
I think that's going to be really helpful for the students, because instead of so much crammed into a short amount of time during the day, it's going to give them more time for the teachers, to give them more instruction, and for more things to soak in, and give them more time to ask the teachers questions. And it's also going to cut back on the amount of time that the kids are going to have homework at home, so that they can actually spend more time doing family stuff instead of sitting at a table, working on homework, instead of spending time with their family, and then they can get more stuff done at school instead of bringing all that stuff home.
Thank you. Missy Hermes?
This isn't the first time that schools in Fergus Falls have tried a block schedule or even a trimester system. Our Lady of Victory Elementary School instituted a trimester system many years ago, and as a parent and a staff member there, I saw no problems with it. A high school schedule, though, is quite different from an elementary schedule, and in the mid-1990s, we had a four-block schedule. Then is now, the idea of block scheduling originated with teachers, and they spent a good deal of time planning and preparing that schedule, and within a short time, it was abandoned, and that is something that left teachers frustrated. Purim High School currently has a trimester system with a six-block schedule. One of those blocks is called the Power Hour, a mentoring time that's spent with teachers that we're going to have here in Fergus Falls that is very valuable. I frequently visit classes, doing presentations at Purim High School, and initially, some teachers and non-certified staff, I believe at the beginning of instituting that block schedule, believed that they were a little bit skeptical, but a friend of mine who teaches there now said, "I absolutely love the trimester. It allows for more electives for students. It's difficult, maybe, for classes like world history, but it is doable. We teach two trimesters of civics and American history, one for government, one geography, economics, and world history. English likes it because it allows for more electives. Science and math do use three trimesters for a few classes. We don't want to go back to quarters and semesters." Teachers in our district, I have surveyed informally, are very willing and enthusiastic even to try this. We are asking them to make other changes. Despite that, our educators want to try this three-five schedule. Despite that, our educators want to try this three-five schedule, which includes that mentoring time, and I support that.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson.
I think that the five-by-three schedule is a good thing for both students and teachers. Students will have more time to focus on five classes each trimester rather than seven classes each semester. Teachers will be better able to better prepare, teaching four classes and having a dedicated prep period each day. Class periods will be 67 minutes, which is slightly longer than they are now, so that both students and teachers can delve deeper into their material each day. And the addition of the half hour of what we call otter time each day will allow students to plan their school week and get one-on-one help in areas that they may be struggling with, hopefully to prevent failures in classes before they happen rather than dealing with them afterward. Each student will get time to connect with an adult staff member one-on-one every day. A side benefit is that the trimester system also matches up very well with our athletic seasons. So overall, I see benefits in many areas, including but not limited to student-student teacher relationships, more electives, the free periods, attendance should be better. We should better address failures before they happen, and also better student engagement. The school board did approve this concept earlier this month, and I am excited to see it unfold as we implement it next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Melanie Cole.
I voted in favor of the five-by-three schedule for a variety of reasons, but what excites me a great deal is what's being referred to as otter time. One thing we know about school is that relationships matter, and so part of the otter time is that we will have a mentor assigned to each student, a teacher that will stay with that student for four years and develop that relationship. I think that will be so beneficial in terms of class class choices and career decisions as well as just the personal support that that will provide a student. In that otter time, they'll have time for study. We will also have a formatted program to talk about social-emotional learning. How do you handle your feelings? What are the appropriate social skills? Even even in the high school, it's still an important conversation to be having with the kids. There'll be time to do the to do homework that hopefully will be done in a format where you can access the teacher if that's necessary because those teachers will also be having otter time. The state made the world's best workforce, and that's a set of expectations about how to meet our current workforce needs through the education we provide to the students. Changing to this block schedule, I believe, is going to allow for more project-based learning and the changes in curriculum that where we can work to address the changing needs of the students and the ability for the teachers to change their way that they're making presentations.
Thank you. Our next question will come to we'll start with Ms. Hermes. What issues do you believe the Fergus Falls School District needs to address in its academic programs and offerings? And what changes would you recommend on the school board?
Well, as a result of a very extensive strategic planning process that our school district has gone through, now that our new superintendent, Mr. Drake, has come on board, we are adding lots of new changes in our district. Project-based learning that has been mentioned, additional International Society for Technology Education standards, also known as ISTI, and that social-emotional learning curriculum for starters. We've also newly expanded the Elementary Gifted and Talented or Academic Enrichment Program guided by Krista Simongaard, and then we have a new curriculum director on board in the school district, Amelia Lamar, and both of them are very talented educators. Local artists are teaching in our primary schools, and we have purchased new math, science, and reading curricula all within the last few years. One-to-one technology has been implemented, probably with a nudge from COVID. And so a brand and now a brand-new schedule has been adopted and approved, so let's start with those changes.
Thank you. Kirby Anderson.
We're constantly looking at ways to improve academic programs and offerings. Each of the major disciplines are on a rotating schedule to update their respective curriculums. As Ms. said, we have a dedicated curriculum director who was a former teacher, and she coordinates and updates curriculum. We have a staff development program so that our teaching staff can stay abreast of teaching techniques and methodologies. We have a real good information technology team that they do a great job of supporting our teaching staff. For instance, they recently helped install new Promethean panels in all of our classrooms that are computer-driven to support the new math curriculum. So we have a lot going for us in the academic program offerings. As far as changes or things we can do to improve, the one area that I want to focus on, I believe we can make a substantial improvement on, is student attendance. Every study that's ever been done on the subject shows that there's a direct correlation between good school attendance and good academic performance. This is not just a local problem, but it's a national problem. Percentages vary by state and by district, but many districts see that between 10% and 30% of their students are chronically absent. And the definition of that is that they miss more than a day every two weeks, which adds up to more than 16 days of absences each year. In 2019, this is our most recent numbers before COVID, our district, we had over 250 students in grades nine through 12 that had 20 or more excused absences. We had 66 students that had an additional ten or more unexcused absences. And to me, this is just this is to say the word unexcusable. I recently looked at a family members' report cards, my brother, from 1963 to 1976. He missed a total of 18 days in 12 years. In fact, in six of those years, he had perfect attendance. You know, that's that's the goal we should strive for. And so to close, I'm going to quote my good friend and fellow board member, Matt Lemke. He says, "One variable in test scores and academics that I believe is true yesterday, today, and forever: if you are not present, it's tough to learn, to do, or grow in anything." Thank you.
Thank you. Melanie Cole.
For clarity, if I saw a need or a lapse in our our curriculum offerings, I'd need to follow the same process as a parent or a citizen for consideration of implementation of a change. As a board member, I don't dictate the curriculum. We have an internal process for that, and so I can submit thoughts about what needs fuller review, but I do not get to dictate that. I look at the academic programming and offerings that we have, and I'm pleased with the breadth and the depth of the offerings that we have. To be quite frank, I am not noting a lapse of anything that we have that we are offering at this time. Always, there's the concern about making sure that the students are mastering what is being presented to them as opposed to just passing a test and moving on to the next topic. And so we are working with some refinements. Principal Anderson has been working with the staff in order to make sure that mastery is the goal and not just not just the passing of a test. We have addressed alternative ways of learning for the students, not only with our IQ Academy or Stride, but also with the Alternative Learning Center that fills a need for some kids that cannot be overstated. And also, we have a variety of teaching methodologies to address the different needs in the academics. As you can tell from my opening statement, what board member Anderson said about truancy, that's that's such a key, and that is a great focus for the school to have is to keep our students within the building. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Chennell.
I don't see that we really need to do any changes with the academic program other than maybe just offer a few more choices for the votec part. Otherwise, it's mainly going to involve the students just showing up for for classes. There's plenty of selections. They've got plenty of good choices. From what I've seen from students and from my kids, they've got plenty of selections. They're all doing good at school. It's the main thing is just for them to just show up and put the effort into getting the good grades and absorbing the knowledge that the teachers give them.
Thank you. We'll come back to Kirby Anderson for our last question today before we will conclude with our closing statements. Mr. Anderson, what do you see as the major issues or challenges facing the Fergus Falls School District and for public education in general?
I see three major issues locally. Number one, school funding and finances. We still have a significant gap in many mandated federal programs, particularly special education. Birth rates have been coming down over the past few years, which leads to declining enrollment in the coming years. The state of Minnesota does have a very complicated formula for distributing funds to public schools, and many of our costs are fixed, but state funding is primarily based on enrollment. And despite increases in Minnesota school district aid over the past years, over 90% of all Minnesota school districts receive less aid per pupil today than in 2003 when adjusted for inflation. And finally, inflation and supply chain issues are the latest financial and planning headaches for our schools. Number two, facilities. Our neighborhood grade school buildings and the Roosevelt Building are in need of constant repairs. Adams and McKinley were constructed in 1939, Roosevelt in 1953, and Cleveland in 1957. At some point, we'll have to look at constructing a new elementary building. Our short-term plans were to move our kindergarten classes to Lincoln, which will open up space in the existing buildings that will allow us to move fifth grade out of Kennedy and back to an elementary setting, but we have to figure out the funding on that right now. Number three, staffing. There are fewer college graduates looking for work as teachers than ever before. In the past, we would have had dozens of applicants for almost any opening that we posted, but times have changed, and we often have to work diligently to make the to make to find qualified staff and support people. Our challenge is to work diligently to make the Fergus Falls School System a great place to work so that we can retain our existing staff members as well as make our schools attractive for new employees. And as far as public education in general, I think as the public school systems have moved into the post-pandemic era, I think we've realized that distance learning is really not the answer for all students. Many students have fallen behind academically and are struggling to catch up. I think that now more than ever, public schools need to focus on core academics and help our students to catch up and excel so that they can continue on their life journey after graduation. Thank you.
Thank you. Melanie Cole.
One of the never-ending major issues with school administration is allocating the resources for the best possible education experience. And this goes into the whole depth of financing, whether it be the disparity in school funding that is received between the the school districts in each community or how to spend the resources that we have. For example, the state legislature will typically allocate 2% or 3% increase each year. The cost of living often exceeds that. Inflation often exceeds that, and not to mention that that our staff has a well-deserved and anticipated increase in pay each year they provide service to the district. So when you and that all doesn't come in at 2% or 3%. So it's it's in that vein that it's a constant juggling act to try to do appropriate and responsible funding within the school districts. How to spend money on resources for in regard to our buildings is always another issue. We've had, as candidate Chono said, we have had back and forth on the facilities and how crowded it is now in Kennedy Building because it was too full over in Cleveland, and that's a constant issue. And of course, when we're talking about doing any building, we're talking about taxpayer dollars, and it all has to be attended to quite prudently. So keeping facilities modern and clean is a challenge, whether that be by repair or staffing the school. Attending to the school culture or the attitudes of the staff and students is also always a challenge in school. The question asks in general, you know, what are the challenges of education? And there are many fold. Right now, education seems to be getting a negative scrutiny from the from much of the public, and that doesn't make any sense. And so that is a current challenge as well.
Thank you. Mark Chennell.
Funding is a big issue, and unfortunately, a lot of it comes from the taxpayers because with the state, it's all regulated like every like the incumbents have said, it's all regulated by pupil. And it's unfortunately, it's the rural areas, the outer areas of the state don't get the much-needed funding they need from the state compared to like the Twin Cities area, which that's where most of the funding goes to because they've got the higher population area. There's not much we can do about that other than try to just watch how we spend the money and just try to focus on where the main issue needs to go. Right now, the biggest issue we have is trying to figure out what we're going to do with the kids because of the overcrowding. And that's going to be our biggest issue going forwards right now is trying to figure out what to do with the kids because they're just too overcrowded and the buildings are deteriorating.
Thank you. Ms. Hermes.
Like the other three that answered, I would put on my list of major issues, public school funding, especially as it relates to unfunded mandates like special education cross-subsidy. And also, we're not getting help from the legislature. This past year, the legislature was unable to agree on an education bill, and that was very unfortunate for every one of Minnesota's schools, not just Fergus Falls. And it's also unfortunate that we have the current unfair practice of basing all school funding on property taxes because, as you said, every Minnesota child deserves a high-quality education, no matter where they live, and it should not be a disadvantage to live in rural Minnesota. Another one of the major issues facing, well, any school across the country would be mental health challenges. And so many challenges that we have in our school districts are a direct result of mental health challenges, whether it's substance abuse, bullying, teacher burnout, truancy. So and then relating back to that might be school safety. And school safety is our number one is number one in our belief statement for our school district, and that relates back to mental health often, too.
Thank you. I think that's the first time I've heard mental health mentioned today, and it's super important, obviously, in today's schools. All right, we will conclude today with our closing statements. We will hear first from Ms. Hermes.
All right. Well, we can look ahead forward to the next four years for our school district and see only challenges or issues, or instead, we can consider the opportunities that lie ahead of us. Funding our district, using tax taxpayer dollars in a responsible way while still meeting the needs of our students and all of our staff is a high priority. I want all of our students to be successful. That's the why. That's the real reason I ran for the school board, and I ask for your vote so that we can do it together.
Thank you. Mark Chennell.
If I get elected to the school board, I'm looking forward to working with the other school board members and maintaining our schools and making sure that all of our students get a proper education and that they have plenty of choices going forwards with their education.
Thank you. Melanie Cole.
Children are our primary resource, and it's a priority to protect them, to teach them, and to offer them the best that we can in our community. But one of six community members that would be elected to give oversight to the school in this role, I don't have a complete impact, but I do have an impact. I can speak about social issues and bring to the table that that repertoire, whereas my fellow board member, Kirby Anderson, works in statistics and financial data like a wizard. So we all we all contribute, and when we work collaboratively, we work better and we make better decisions. When we when we look at an issue with multifaceted perspectives, we make better decisions. The school board is a nonpartisan office, and that's the way it's intended to be. Candidate Nansen made some comment about removing the national politics from our decision-making, and I would have been curious to have him elaborate on that because my role on the school board is to make the best decision for our children and our community and to resist the national trends that are even more prominent than I have ever seen before. There's a taint of politics that is seems to be underlying all the campaigns this year, particularly this nonpartisan office, and I would just like to redirect my focus to say I'm here for our community. And I would just like to redirect my focus to say, I'm here for our community and our children. In my tenure, I've held a role in moving the district out of statutory operating debt, in reconfiguring our buildings and undertaking remodeling and building projects. Experience and dedication matters, and I would love to be re-elected to the school board.
Thank you. Kirby Anderson?
What exactly does a school board member do? You know, you kind of wonder sometimes. You know, we set a vision and establish a structure which includes, you know, advocating for students and families, evaluating superintendent and hiring superintendent, monitoring and using data to help evaluate progress towards district goals, setting policy and conducting business in a responsible manner. That's kind of our legal charge. But you know, more importantly, we need to keep in contact with the community, including the students, the teachers, the support staff, the parents and community members. As a retiree, a good part of my day is dedicated to reviewing emails, texts, phone conversations, personal contacts and responding to those concerns. But because I'm retired, I also make an appointment to get to some of our facilities every few days. I was at the high school this morning. It's always fun to see the students and visit with staff, taking an athletic contest or an orchestra concert. But the most rewarding time of all is graduation because that caps off the year, and really, that's the end result of what school board work is all about. I enjoy my work as a member of the Fergus Falls School Board. When I was elected to this position in 2018, I never dreamed that we'd have to deal with a global pandemic. We had distance learning, face covering, social distancing, testing, quarantining, et cetera, et cetera. You know, we didn't sign up for any of that, but we persevered. I'm really happy to say we were able to keep our K through four students in person, in class, on a daily basis for all but a couple of weeks. And I'm really happy now that we can finally focus on curriculum, facilities, staffing, and all the other aspects of school districts that need our attention. So I know that I can continue to bring value to the board, and I hope you agree, and I hope you vote for Kirby Anderson for school board for four more years. Thank you.
Thank you, Kirby. Thank you to all of our candidates today. That will conclude our Fergus Falls School District School Board Debate. As a reminder, the election will be on November 8th, 2022, and residents within the Fergus Falls School District will be allowed to vote for up to three candidates for the school board. Thank you again for tuning in on behalf of Leighton Broadcasting and News Talk 1250 KBRF. Have a great day.